As long as I don't watch, they'll probably win. Please call the roll.
Hoffman.
Here.
Lahr.
Here.
Krickenberg.
Here.
Swallow.
Here.
Bowman.
Here.
Parsons.
Here.
Tarris.
Here.
And here.
All right, we have four. Item four is discussion and action on a consent agenda. All of the following items concerned reports and items of routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request it to be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, that will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of May 19th, 2025, and approval of claims in the amount of $1,229,389.11 and payroll expenses of $366,834.66. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Hoffman and a second by Mr. Bowman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Tarris.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Krickenberg.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Item six, reports from staff. There's no planning commission meeting. Mr. Bowman, hospital authority meeting from May 27.
It was a pretty routine meeting. The hospital has a budget, the homestead has a budget, all of the new surgeons are booked full, so they're doing real good, and that's about it.
Any questions for Mr. Bowman? All right. Next item is the Alba Public Library Board Meeting on June 9th. Mrs. Swallow?
They're busy with their summer activities, and they have a total of 48 activities planned for this summer. Their remodel for share, the shared room is almost complete, so they've received a donation to purchase laptops for patrons to use, and they've had some leaking from the recent rain.
Really?
Yes, in the front door.
That roof is, oh, wasn't the roof?
No, they think it came through the floor.
Okay, well, that's encouraging. Any questions for Mrs. Swallow? All right, thank you. Our next item is the Alba Arena Authority Special Meeting on May 30th, 2025. Todd, I don't know if you want to be put on the spot or... Okay. You have the minutes in the packet. Is there any discussion on that? All right. Next item is Tourism Tax Commission Meeting on the 21st of May. Mrs. Beer, would you like to give us a report, please?
It was pretty routine. We passed and heard from the Northwestern Rodeo, we re-approved their money, they gave us their presentation, and then we approved the rotary fireworks, so that was it.
Any questions for Mrs. Beer? Thank you. Next item is the Regional Airport Commission Meeting on June 9th. Also a relatively routine meeting. We did hear a request for a donation for the wheels and wings and things. Festival that's coming up with the county fair this year, and that was tabled. I think everything else was routine reports. Any question regarding the airport? Thank you. The next item is Parks and Recreation Commission Meeting on... There was no meeting, okay. We will make sure that everybody knows that we will be having grand opening ribbon cutting ceremony on the 21st, so this Saturday at 12:00. I do, I did speak with Kurt Washburn, and you know, I think everybody knows we're naming the pool in honor of Cory and Cory's family and their gift that they gave to kind of kick things off with our fundraising efforts. But I do believe the Washburn family will be there, and it would tickle me nothing more if Liam is the first one to jump in that pool, so anyway, I hope everybody can make it. Will you go ahead and post a non-business agenda so that we have coverage for open meetings? That way, if council members can make it. Any questions? There was no meeting, okay. Cemetery meeting, there was no cemetery meeting. Finance Committee Meeting on 16th of June. Dr. Lahr.
It was pretty routine, as everyone's been saying. We had a, our finances look pretty good, closing out the budget, looks like we're pretty close to what we budgeted for this financial year, and then we're also moving some money around to pay for the scholarship out of our CDs, and then putting the rest of the money back into CDs up for bid, and then we're also looking into some new ICS accounts that might pay a little higher interest.
Any questions for Dr. Lahr? All right, City Mayor's Report. I spent last, the majority last week in Midwest City with the Mayor's Council of Oklahoma for their summer mayor's conference. I'm probably going to, there are some good reminders there, and probably this one has been one of the ones that probably inspired me more than most have, but you know, just the reminders of, you know, why we ran for these positions or accepted appointments in some cases, and you know, what it is that we're supposed to be doing here. I'm starting to put some thoughts together to bring back in front of the council and turn in regarding, you know, what direction we need to look at as a governing body for the coming year or two. And anyway, I don't want to belabor it this evening, but we've got some things that as the legislative branch of our city, that we should really be giving some consideration. Of course, I want that to be council consideration, not just mayor directives, and so I hope to have something to bring back before you guys next month. May or may not be an action item, but we'll move in that direction. Other than that, had a lot of rain, and I think most of the time we love rain, except when we're trying to cut wheat or put roofs on buildings, so.
Or put roads down.
Or put roads down, but anyway. Anybody have any questions? I see Steve got in his report some of the upcoming things with the league. Some questions for me? Thank you. Mr. Ford, City Business Manager Report.
Thank you, sir. So yeah, my report is attached to the agenda, so if there are any questions on that, let me know. Otherwise, it's just been a busy month. There have been going on for the pool and everything else around town. I mean, seems like we had really nice weather until it rains again, and then it stops everything we're trying to do with these streets and parking lots and everything else, so it's really putting the damper on us. But as you can see on there, the regional council meeting, 27 June, 10:30 at the Ranger Room. So far, only heard from Mr. Parsons that he wants to go. If anyone else wants to go, let me know. I'll get you registered. Yeah, I'll get you registered. It's a usually pretty interesting meeting. This will be, I think, our third one so far this year, so.
First that we've hosted.
The first we've hosted, yeah. The other was in Conca City, and then the other was in Woodward. So anyway, it's usually a pretty good regional meeting.
If I can expand a little bit on that. So one of the things with the municipal league is that they, over the years, they've had really consistent involvement from mayors and business managers. One of the things that was identified as a priority for the continuation of the league was to ensure that we had, you know, pipelines of quality candidates to come in and fill board positions and things like that. But in doing so, it's kind of evolved into the establishment of these regional councils, and this would be wrapping up the first year of this implementation when we have, when we host ours in May, or in June, or later this month. But it is designed to really bring in more than just the mayors and managers in terms of what's going on statewide, what are the important issues facing municipalities, give some networking opportunities out in the other corners of the state and not just 23rd and Lincoln. So I would encourage you to consider coming. It's not a full day, it's just going to be part of the day, but it'll be, it'll be good stuff, and I think for those of you that have been to a municipal league conference, it'll be kind of like a mini version of some of that. But do think about attending and let Steve know, and he can get you registered.
Lunch will be included. Lunch will be included.
Lunch is included.
As you can see on there, also the annual conference, 10th to 12th September. I need to know if you want to go, because I need to start blocking off rooms before they start filling up. So if you already know by the end of this month, I appreciate it. We still have the early bird discount until the end of August, but these rooms fill up fast, so I need, we need to get those reserved sooner or later, so let me know. If you want to go on golf, you'll go down one night earlier, and because golf is on the night, the day of the night, so that's usually a pretty good time. So I highly recommend you just attend that. And then, once again, the NOI, the beneficial institute, 16 October, Woodward Conference Center, anything after 5:00 PM. It never goes that long, but it's a really good class. I enjoyed it last year.
And it is a requirement for newly elected officials to attend one and within their first year.
That's the closest one that's going to be this year. But they have them pretty much every month all over the state, though, so you might have to drive to it if you can't make it, so. That's all I got, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Ford from the council? Thank you. Item seven, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Public comments will be limited to two minutes per speaker, and the speaker is asked to please identify himself or herself. Anybody care to make a public comment? Well, we're glad you're all here with us. Roger, I'm going to do it.
No, it's crap. My dad, my dad is speaking, I'll bring my portion.
Let's go back up to item I, City Business Managers' Report, and hear from Mr. Godwin and City Economics.
Everybody's got your package.
All right. At your station.
Good evening, everybody. Shook everybody's hand that was here. Just wanted to come up. I was, I've been up here, I think, twice so far this month, it was my second run. Came up to meet with a bank that's getting rid of some properties, and we want to kind of be on top of that, just to see what we can do, and if you guys really have any questions on the report or anything like that, we'll have to answer any questions.
Can you, and I know there's some, some things that you can share that won't jeopardize any transaction, but can you maybe give us kind of a, whatever kind of summary you can give us regarding?
Run down, yeah. So you guys hired me back in October, I believe, last year, and just been making sure to be up here as much as I can. As we hear of things, we're making sure to have conversations with brokers, with realtors, with landowners, things like that, as well as making an evaluation of the entire city, which has been the main goal and objective, to see what Alba does have to offer. I've also attended the ICSC Conference in Dallas, which is a regional conference, it's the International Shopping Center or something. But we had a really good show down there, talked to a couple of franchisees, franchisors, and asked them, hey, what are you guys doing in Oklahoma? And then I get the opportunity to brag on what's happening here, because a lot of, a lot of the franchisees that are in business, or the big businesses that are in business, they don't know everything from a thousand feet, right? So I get to say, hey, the arena is coming, so now we're going to have the arena, you guys are going to have this traffic. You know, Northwestern has this massive rodeo show. The Arc brings in tons of people. So I get to tell that story, and it makes it more appealing to them to have a consideration. So with that, we've had two major franchises ask about a couple of properties here in Alba, and we're continuing to pursue those. Some of the conversations that we have had that I can discuss are, there's some, there's some people that have property right along the main corridor in Oklahoma, and they would like us to talk to them, and we have spoken to those owners, and we're in the process of negotiating to acquire those properties and see what we can do to negotiate them so we can bring in some great tax revenue for Alba. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we've done. Went out to the Vegas show, holy crap. I don't know if y'all have been out there, but the Oklahoma, or the Las Vegas Convention Center is astronomically large, it's two stories of like 300,000 square feet, so I spent all day running back and forth, and I talked to around 70 franchisees and businesses that are, at least say that they're willing to look at Oklahoma. Not everybody is by any stretch of the imagination, but we've had conversations with them, and we're looking to have all those follow-up conversations. I feel like I've been able to make sure to stay on track of things, you know, with the family tragedy that's happened, and really appreciate y'all's understanding with time and some of the stuff's been last minute, but you know, landing on our feet, and you know, we're good, so I really appreciate all the, you know, comments and prayers and all that. But if you guys have any questions, I think everyone has an envelope except for Mr. Samuel, we'll make sure you have my contact information, too. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. But thank you again for the opportunity to serve you guys, and you know, we're making forward momentum, and that's about all I got.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Any questions from the council?
Is there a report available from the planning session we had?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. And then also, I believe there was, you have people in town working on a video?
Yes.
Is that going to be available to us?
Yes, it will be. So we really want to make sure that that goes to you guys to get to your tourism department or whatever it may be. The young man that's doing all the editing got a job in Japan to do submission work, so he's doing a nonprofit's mission work video for them, so that's where he is, but he'll be back, I think, at the middle of this, or like in another week. So they should be able to have that finished by next council meeting, so I'll be able to send it to you guys. Yep. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We'll continue to keep your family in our thoughts.
Appreciate that.
Thank you all for the prayers.
Have a good meeting.
Okay. Now we'll go back to item number eight. Discussion and action to approve resolution 2025-005, Resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma, adopting the fiscal year 2526 annual budget. We had the budget hearing last month, and the budget is unchanged from that. We did have, I'll just add, we did have insurance premium information come in, and it came in below what we budgeted, so we're good there. And with that, I entertain a motion to approve the budget resolution.
Mr. Mayor, I'll approve Budget Resolution 2025-005, a resolution, City of Alba, Oklahoma, adopting the FY 2025-2026 annual budget.
Second. Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Parsons, to approve Resolution Number 2025-005, Resolution of the City of Alba, Oklahoma, adopting the fiscal year 2526 annual budget. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Krickenberg.
Yes.
Tarris.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
All right. And we will get that sent off to the state for filing, and it will be legal. Item nine, discussion and action to approve City of Alba Resolution Number 2025-006, A Resolution Approving Action Taken by the Alba Arena Authority Authorizing Issuance, Sale, and Delivery of Tax Apportionment Bonds of the Authority, Approving and Authorizing a Security Agreement Pertaining to Certain Tax Increment Revenues, Waiving Competitive Bidding on the Bonds, and Authorizing the Sale Thereof at a Discount, and Containing Other Provisions Related There Too. A copy of the resolution was in your packet, but we have Mr. Bachelor here with the bond council, and I guess, can you enlighten us as to what all we're considering here?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening to council members. My name is Bodhi Bachelor, and I'm an attorney with Centennial Law Group, and we're from Comanche, Oklahoma, a good bit south of here. So we are bond council for the Arena Authority. Mr. Holder and his group were kind enough to retain us to assist them on the project. In short, I contend to be long-winded, so I'm going to try to be real short-winded tonight, but happy to answer any questions and go as deep as you guys would like to go into the details. I enjoy this work, and that's one reason I'm a little long-winded sometimes, because it's fun. In short, with the city's part in this bond issuance, of course, these are bonds to fund the arena construction project, and this has been in the works a very, very long time. Tireless efforts by citizens here in Alba to get this done. We're at the, we're at the threshold of completing the financing to have the money from the purchasers of the bonds in hand to be available to fund the construction cost from here on out. The Arena Authority is a public trust, like many of your public trusts, the beneficiaries of the trust are the city and the county. And so by statute, when the trust authority incurs debt, the beneficiaries have to approve that debt. So the county commissioners met this morning, I understand, the report I had was they approved for their part the issuance of the debt by the Arena Authority. We're here tonight to ask for your approval of that issuance of debt. Now, just so that we're very clear, your vote tonight does not obligate the city for one penny of any kind of debt. This is not a debt of the city. This is not a tax on anyone in the city. This is a obligation payable by the Arena Authority and the Arena Authority only. The cities, there's only really two key documents, well, three, that the city, we asked the city to sign with regard to the bond closing, that being the resolution before you tonight approving, the second being a security agreement. The security agreement is addressing only the increment revenues from the Tiff District, okay? So without getting too deep in the Tiff, but happy to answer questions, the Tiff was established and set certain sales tax income and property tax income at the levels at that time, and the extra amount of sales tax that grows in that specific geographical zone and the property tax is the incremental revenue, that is what is pledged toward repayment of the bonds. And so that is the only sort of contribution, if you will, from the city is that incremental revenue. It's already set out, it's already laid out that that incremental revenue is for the purpose of the arena. This security agreement simply is the connecting link from those already existing increment revenues, or rather, already defined increment revenues linking it to the purchaser of the bonds as a source, a source of their repayment, okay? So not obligating the city for anything new, simply following statute to seek your approval for this tonight. There's also a closing certificate, and Mr. Cunningham and I've had some conversations, I've sent him these documents, the resolution, closing certificate, and the security agreement, among others, with the bond closing, and so I think, Drew, I won't speak for you, but...
No issues, I saw it. I think it's ready to go.
Okay. I'll quit there, but again, happy to answer questions or dive deeper.
Well, we appreciate the explanation, it's well better than I would have fumbled through it. Does council have any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve item nine as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Parsons, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve City of Alba Resolution Number 2025-006 as stated in number nine of the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Parsons.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Krickenberg.
Yeah.
Tarris.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Lahr.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate you coming up, it's been all the work.
You'll wait till I can meet him, so I know.
You got, you driving back to Comanche?
Yes, sir, later this evening.
I'm happy to sign now. Ship the chip in a hotel.
No, no problem at all, I prefer my boat.
Oh, well, we're not going to have that many students tonight.
Okay, I can leave this with you.
Go, we'll leave here, I'll get him off.
Okay, yeah, I think they were just getting mayor and clerk and then seals on themselves. Okay.
Do you need a level?
Yes, sir, that'd be great. All right, don't mind.
No problem. I'll sign after.
Thank you.
Okay. Item 10, Discussion and Action Regarding the Oklahoma Economic Development Authority, OEDA, 2025 Mayor Election to Represent Woods County Cities and Towns for the OEDA Board of Trustees, or excuse me, Board of Directors. What we do is, as a city council and then the other town boards in Woods County and well, and throughout the district for OEDA, they choose the representatives, the representative mayor that they want to select the appointee for their region. And so your options are myself, the Tacoma Mayor Joel Shoulders, Freedom Mayor Concha Herrera, and the Monocah Mayor Don Cummins. I'm going to tell you that I think it's important that Alba have representation on this board, and I would recommend that the council approve my designation to make that appointment. Any questions?
I'd make a motion to approve Mayor Kelly Parker to represent Woods County Cities and Towns for the OEDA Board of Directors.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Lahr, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to select Kelly Parker, Mayor of Alba, to represent Woods County Cities and Towns for the OEDA Board of Directors 2025, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hoffman. Lahr.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Tarris.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Krickenberg.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
And we will keep you posted if I draw your name out of the hat. Item 11, Discussion and Action to Approve the Mayor's Recommendation to Remove Mr. Leonard Reed From the City of Alba Library and Cemetery Boards.
I have a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation to remove Mr. Leonard Reed from the City of Alba Library and Cemetery Board.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Lahr, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to remove Leonard Reed from the City of Alba Library and Cemetery Boards. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Tarris.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
Krickenberg.
Yes.
Item 12, is Discussion and Action to Enter into Executive Session per 25 OS 307 B1 and B2 to Discuss the FY 2526 City of Alba and IFF Local 3782 Negotiations, City Business Manager Contract Negotiations, Performance KPIs, and City of Alba EMS Performance Appraisals for the following full-time positions, EMS Director, Assistant Director, Paramedic, and EMT Advanced Four Positions. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Motion to enter into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Lahr, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to enter into executive session per item 12 on the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Lahr.
Yes.
Hoffman.
Yes.
Krickenberg.
Yes.
Swallow.
Yes.
Tarris.
Yes.
Parsons.
Yes.
Bowman.
Yes.
All right. I'll ask Sadie to remain, clerk to remain, Steve and our attorney to remain. Revival plot for grant EMS services and authorize the mayor and/or city business manager to sign all necessary documents. There is no action needed on that item unless council members see otherwise. All right. Item 15 is Discussion and Action Approving the FY 2526 City of Alba and IFF Local 3782 Contract. There's no action to be taken on that item. And number 16, Discussion and Action Regarding the City Business Manager Contract Performance KPIs. There's no action to be taken on that at this time. To my knowledge, there is no, there are no items that qualify as new business, and that takes us to item 18, Remarks and Inquiries by Council Members.
That sidewalk grant thing, I'm assuming that is similar to what Cherokee and Monocah just got. That sidewalk grant thing, I'm assuming that is similar to what Cherokee and Winoka just got? Are we, what's going on with that? This town, it sucks, walk around. I mean, on the boulevard, I don't know where those would go either. You see so many people just...
I know she's applied for it, I don't know, Mr. Godwin, I'm just hoping.
Do we have a grant writer?
I wouldn't mind seeing her, you know, kind of talk about it. You know, at least say, once or twice a year, kind of talk about the grants whenever we aren't...
Because they did a good job with this town.
Yes.
Especially Cherokee, they did it fast.
Yeah, we can get her to have a report to the council.
Because I think that would like do a million bucks. I don't know, do...
Safe Streets for All. I think that's a side...
Safe as the school is too, that was in the fall.
I thought it was at the top of this, somewhere.
Or this one. Safe Streets. Up here, there's... Yeah, this is those two. And the one, the big one, is always in the fall.
Yes, so Sammy, we do have a grant writer. We hired one about two or three years ago, and we've had two people in that position, but we've got one. And she's been, she's had, returning on investment in space.
Also, a lot of people, or mostly actually, it's not now, whatever her name is, McCubrey. The trash cans, I'm not against it, but on move out day, there becomes a lot of trash in town all at once. So she was talking about next year, or next semester, something. If there's a way to get some roll-offs just to deal with this, so it doesn't end up where it shouldn't be in everybody else's dumpsters, is that...
Sounds like...
It's not on us, but it seems like...
Sounds like there's a plan in place.
Yeah, there's been some discussion, we've got some challenges.
Okay.
But we do get eight free roll-offs a year from Waste Connection. So that might be a time to say, okay, that's going to be our spring cleanup, and it kind of coincides with your first year of graduation. Put those things around town. Move that.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
Long street locks out. I know that's not on us, but there's surely somebody...
Well, make sure that he knows so we can get in contact, if any.
Yeah, just put it down on the portal.
Do you need one, or...
No, you can back them up together, then I can get them to, to, if you need.
Any other remarks and inquiries by council members?
How's the road crew? Are they still way behind on it? Am I not pick up?
Yeah. They're, they're doing everything they can. I mean, there's a lot of them though.
I cut a whole tree down on yesterday.
It could be one other day.
Yeah, it could be one other day. Anything else? Or are we adjourned? All right, we'll adjourn the city council and move to the Alva Utility Authority. Call the meeting to order, please call the rolls.
Hoffman?
Here.
Larr?
Here.
Creckenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
Adir?
Item three is Discussion and Action on a Consent Agenda. The following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at ADA meeting, can be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of 19th May 2025. And Item B, Approval of Claims in the Amount of $885,730.65 and Payroll Expenses of $44,086.75. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Item five is Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution 2025-002, Resolution of the Alva Utility Authority of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, Adopting the 2025-2026 Fiscal Year Annual Budget. Is there any discussion on that? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve item five, as stated in the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Larr, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve Resolution 2025-002, Budget Resolution for the Alva Utility Authority, as stated in item five. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Larr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Item six is new business. We do not have anything that needs the threshold for new business, therefore, we will adjourn the Utility Authority meeting, and I will call to order the regular Alva Economic Development Authority meeting. Please call the rolls.
Hoffman?
Present.
Larr?
Here.
Creckenberg?
Here.
Swallow?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Ferris?
Here.
Adir?
Item three is Discussion and Action on the Consent Agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at ADA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of consideration and action on the following items. Item A, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of May 19th, 2025. And Item B, Approval of Claims in the Amount of $580,57.74 and Payroll Expenses of $33,445.17. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Bowman, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. Item five is a Presentation of Thank You Letter from the NWSU Foundation. In your information there, you can see the letter we got from the foundation. There's no action that needs to be taken on that. But we do appreciate getting the notice of their appreciation. Item six is Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution Number 20...
That's right.
I don't think I need that.
Are you sure?
Do I?
No.
2025-001, A Resolution of the Alva Economic Development Authority of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, Adopting the 2025-2026 Annual Budget. entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve Resolution 2025-001, A Resolution of the Alva Economic Development Authority of the City of Alva, Oklahoma, Adopting the 2025-2026 Annual Budget.
Second.
Have a motion by Dr. Larr, a second by Mr. Hoffman, to approve Resolution 2025-001, A Resolution of the Economic Development Authority Adopting the 2025-2026 Annual Budget. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Larr?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Bowman?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Item seven is Discussion and Action to Approve Resolution Number 2025-002, Resolution Authorizing Funds Held in the Economic Development Fund to be utilized for funding in part of the City of Alva Pool Construction Project and providing for reimbursement in the amount of $250,000, with reimbursement at a rate of $50,000 per year, beginning with the 2026-2027 budget year. This, you got the information regarding this resolution. It is, this is not an inappropriate use of any of these funds, but it is, they are funds that we want to make sure that council authorize utilization of them for a purpose that's not typically used for. It is related to not receiving the grant funding from the federal government for the pool project, and this makes up a portion of that, and gives us some parameters for returning those funds to their originally restricted purpose. Any discussion? Larr? Please call, or I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-002 as stated in item seven on the agenda.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Bowman, a second from Mr. Hoffman, to approve Resolution Number 2025-002, as stated in the agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Bowman?
Yes.
Hoffman?
Yes.
Creckenberg?
Yes.
Ferris?
Yes.
Parsons?
Yes.
Larr?
Yes.
Swallow?
Yes.
All right. And nothing qualifies as new business again. Item nine is to adjourn, but we will do that. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Have a wonderful evening, and enjoy the remaining daylight.